Please stand in prayer will be given by Pastor Kenny Bryant of the Tabanacra Church Norfolk. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Our Father and our God, we come to you this night and we want to thank you. We want to start off this meeting by thanking you. You are the one from whom all good blessings flow. And Father, we thank you for this great city that we have. Father, we remember those in our city that put their lives on the line each and every day for us. And we are thankful to you for them. We are thankful for those who call Norfolk home, who are deployed around the world, who again, put themselves and their life on the line for freedom. Father, we thank you for the city council and the responsibility that they have. Father, I would ask that you would give them wisdom and knowledge beyond their ability. Father, they need your empowerment and your guidance. Father, might the people that are here tonight be blessed and might they be thankful to you. Father, we thank you again for this great city. Would God bless the city of Norfolk. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution certifying the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. For the benefit of those who do not regularly attend the city council meetings, the procedure that we will follow tonight is to first take up ceremonial items, then public hearings, then the consent agenda, which will be voted on in a block. Any member of the council or the public who wishes to remove a consent agenda item from the block, we will do so and consider it separately. Following the consent agenda, we'll take up our regular agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon the completion of the agenda, we then take up new business to come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered with the clerk outside of the lobby prior to 7:00 P.M. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for being here. Mr. Clerk, we have no ceremonial items. We'll move right into PH one.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a lease agreement between the city and downtown Norfolk Development Corporation, trading as Downtown Norfolk Council for the lease of premises located at 208 East Main Street, Selden Arcade.
Mayor Mill is here to answer any questions. If there are any questions, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the city and downtown Norfolk Development Corporation, trading as Downtown Norfolk Council for the lease of premises located in Selden Arcade, 208 East Main Street in the city of Norfolk, and authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH two, motion is for this item to be withdrawn?
Yes, sir. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Thank you, enter. Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH three?
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of CCMAC LLC for a change of zoning from light industrial to corridor commercial on property located at 843 44th Street. And by six zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Clerk, call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this item. The first is an ordinance to rezone property located at 843 44th Street from I two to C two zoning district. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance granting a special exception to prevent mixed uses on property located at 843 44th Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH four?
Public hearing four scheduled for this day on the application of Alex Youngblood for a change of zoning from R eight single family to R nine single family on property located at 1516 Norcova Avenue. And by six zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezone property located at 1516 Norcova Avenue from R eight to R nine. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH five?
Public hearing five scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving an agreement between the city and Norfolk Botanical Garden, Inc. for the use of certain city-owned property at 6700 Azalea Garden Road and known as Norfolk Botanical Garden.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of agreement of an agreement between the city and Norfolk Botanical Garden for the use of certain city-owned property at 6700 Azalea Garden Road and known as Norfolk Botanical Garden. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, C one, C two will be considered in a block.
Approve the consent agenda and dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinances and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, R one, motion is to continue until July 18th.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, R two, the motion is to continue until June 13th as a public hearing item.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R three?
An ordinance permitting 2109 through 2111 Granby Street LLC to encroach into the right-of-way of Granby Street with an existing pole and sign. Dispense with the charter requirement-
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions on this. Is it okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Anyone here, maybe George can come speak to this. Or Susan, sorry.
Mr. Homewood, how are you?
Good, Mr. Mayor. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you. Mr. Thomas has questions.
As I understand it, this poll is on city property, and this is a new user at this property who wants to continue to use this sign. But the sign is not in conformance with the 21st Street PCO, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that this property is within?
All of those are correct statements, sir.
Okay, so why aren't we then requiring the sign to be taken down since it's not in conformance and it's on our property?
The reason is that the parcel in question, the private parcel, is part of a national and state register historic district. The building to which the sign applies is a contributing structure. Within that, the sign, while not specifically noted in the register application, from all we can tell, was constructed at the same time as the building or very nearly the same time as the building. Therefore, we've adjudged it to be nearly as contributing as the building itself to historic district. And therefore, we had issued no objection to going ahead and issuing encroachment for the existing non-conforming sign. The only part that's being approved is the lollipop on top of the pole. The square box that at some later time was attached about two-thirds of the way up the pole is being removed and is not part of the approval process.
Okay. And to the planning department, that's more valuable than the pedestrian-oriented regulations of the PCO? The historical aspect of it in this circumstances?
It's an existing non-conforming sign. We did not see that it harms the pedestrian connectivity in the area. And given the historic, potential historic significance, we decided that allowing the existing non-conforming sign remain was the better option.
Okay. Thank you, George.
Mr. Clerk? Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I'd like to thank my colleague for asking those good questions. But I'm satisfied with the answer. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Yep, Martin was all over this. We appreciated that. Thanks. Bye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R four?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with Francis Haley Jr. and Glenda Haley regarding the property located at 2553 Tidewater Drive in connection with the Lindenwood Barrow Park shoreline restoration project.
Ellis James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Smith, bless your heart. There are some big things happening in Norfolk as it pertains to living shorelines and water quality. I just wanted to acknowledge that the fine two people who keep tabs on Ward three and Super Ward seven can be pleased with this project. And I think it's important that those of us who are involved, as I am, but many others, in the questions that are now arising with respect to how Norfolk's moving forward on its plans to learn to live with water. That presentation today was very interesting, and it's going to come right our way. I hope that each of you council members will vote in support of this item. I don't think it's any problem that I know of. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ellis. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Thank you, Ellis, for your comments. I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Ellis, thank you. And also to the community of Barrow Park for this great opportunity has great possibilities as far as this waterway. Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R five?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter forty-six of the Code of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, nineteen seventy-nine to establish the Ocean View Tourism Zone, the Downtown Tourism Zone, and the Military Highway Tourism Zone pursuant to Section fifty-eight point one dash thirty-eight fifty-one of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R six?
An ordinance approving the capital improvement plan budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty seventeen, and ending June thirty, twenty eighteen, appropriating eighty-four million, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for certain projects approved therein, authorizing an issue of bonds in the amount of seventy-two million, four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, of which seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars is the reappropriation of previously authorized but unissued bonds, and authorizing the expenditure of eleven million, eight-hundred-and-two thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars in cash. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R seven?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Norfolk to enter into a cooperation agreement in appropriating funds to enable the economic development authority of the city of Norfolk to enter into and fulfill its obligations under a grant agreement with Fort Norfolk Urgent Care LLC. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
I want to thank Economic Development for working closely on this project and also for the staff for making the last-minute changes that we needed in Bernard's office. I really appreciate how quickly you guys were able to turn everything around. So, thank you so much. I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye. Let's success on the project.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain. R eight?
An ordinance appropriating grant funds totaling fifty-four million, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seventeen dollars to the school board of the city of Norfolk for Title One programs, other special programs of the school matrician services program, and authorizing the expenditure of the funds in fiscal year twenty eighteen for Norfolk public schools. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R nine?
An ordinance approving the July one, twenty seventeen, through June thirty, twenty eighteen, budget for the Norfolk Law Library, authorizing the city treasurer to make disbursements and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of up to two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars by the Norfolk Law Library from various sources, including monies assessed and collected by the city as part of costs and civil court actions in accordance with the approved budget and the October one, nineteen eighty-seven agreement among the city, the Norfolk Law Library, and the Norfolk and Portsmouth Power Association. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R ten?
An ordinance appropriating funds for operation of the city for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty seventeen, and ending June thirty, twenty eighteen, appropriating U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development entitlement grants, authorizing short-term equipment financing, providing a supplement for certain eligible retirees, and regulating the payment of money from the city treasury. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R eleven?
An ordinance approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty eighteen compensation plan for officers and employees of the city, amending and reordaining the Norfolk City Code nineteen seventy-nine as amended, and approving criteria and procedures for pay supplements for certain constitutional and state officers and their employees. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Doug looks like he's over there holding his breath. Congratulations, Doug, on eight zero votes on your budget. Aye.
Wait a minute, we have-
Doug, I tell you, don't spike the ball early. Mr. Thomas? Dr. Whibley?
The tough one. Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Doug, on behalf of the council, thank you for your hard work. I will yield the mic to you for any appropriate comments that you wish to make.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We do a lot of important things during the course of the year. None of them more important than putting together the spending plan. And this was, they're all challenging. But this one was challenging, and we had a lot of transition, a lot of new faces and a lot of new players. And there's a group of folks on a couple of rows back here. Greg Patrick being the director of budget strategic planning, and his team shorthanded and with new leadership stepped up and really did a terrific job. And I would just like to take a moment and acknowledge you all and tell you that I appreciate it. Appreciate the leadership that Deputy City Manager Mike Goldsmith brought. But you did a great job, and I hope you go out and celebrate soon.
Would you ask them to stand?
Please.
Ask them to stand.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
They look young. That's a good sign.
Michael McKenna, please come forward. Make any comments. You have three minutes, sir.
Sorry, I had a terrible accident while back.
Mike, it's good to see you.
Anyway. My name is Michael McKenna. I reside at thirty-one twenty-four Douglas Road in Chesapeake, Virginia. I am a national representative of service employees International Union, National Association of Government Employees, and International Brotherhood of Police Officers. A member of the Norfolk Democrat Committee, and I represent over ten thousand public safety officers and civilians in Hampton Roads. We have some immediate concerns. One is the pay system. One is dispatchers. One is retirees. And the last one is Virginia Line of Duty Act constitutional amendment. The first incident is, as you know, we know a new pay system was implemented the first of the year. Unfortunately, many employees have suffered from it. I have reason to believe that the new pay plan was implemented too quickly and not tested. Due to this, many employees do not receive their adjusted compensation and recently discovered their accrued leave has been affected. Some employees that received a stipend for over twenty-six years have now lost this benefit. They are not sure as what happened to that stipend. Second thing, recently, some information was shared on the internet concerning Norfolk's dispatchers' response time. I can say that there are many reasons for this. Many dispatchers are overworked, underpaid, and misunderstood. Years ago, telecommunications came under the police department where they reported and were supervised by police and fire. This added a direct chain of command and allowed for a whole, a more answerable and controlled system. The reorganization of this department would save the city money and afford citizens more response and response time in emergencies. Dispatches are faced with extreme stress while handling many serious calls. PTSD is not uncommon with many dispatchers. Many dispatchers are forced to leave Norfolk for employment and other agencies. Recently, a nine-year veteran left and went to work for the DOD police dispatchers in Norfolk. Many other ones are leaving. We ask that a study be conducted by the city to determine if any changes are warranted. The continued safety of Norfolk citizens rests in your hands. Retirees are still asking for some relief. They have not received a raise almost eight years. Police and fire unions are requesting that the funds identified by council for some retirees take into account retirees that reached full retirement but make less than one thousand dollars per month. There are many retirees that make less than five hundred dollars a month. It's not because they didn't plan. It's because the city at that time didn't have all these programs they have now and didn't offer them these programs to save money. And the city also said they would take care of them in future pre-hospitalization, which is don't want to exist. This is only going to affect a hundred public safety employees, maybe, and maybe two hundred altogether in general employees. Virginia, the last thing, Virginia has adopted a constitutional amendment to allow the line of duty retired and deceased officers and spouses to be tax-exempt from personal property tax on homes owned by them and the spouses. If a spouse was to remarry, then they would lose the exemption. At the time, Senator Kenneth Cooper Alexander assisted me in sponsoring this amendment, and it passed. We now ask that you support and adopt the honorable amendment. Please help us today. We hope you're up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Martha Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Brown.
Mayor Alexander and council members, I'm here to call your attention to something that happened to me on Friday, May the nineteenth. Leaving Ruby Tuesday, having a lunch just before three o'clock, I pulled out of Ruby Tubby's parking lot and I moved on to where you come out from the shopping center and got in the lane to make a right turn to Lowry Road. I was the first one and so there were a lot of cars behind me. A young male, young black man between the age, I guess of twenty or twenty-five from what I could see, hit me from behind. He got out of his vehicle just as I was entering, you know, to get out of my car and he said, "Oh, I bumped you, but I didn't do any damage to the car." And I said, "Yeah," because it was kind of shocking. He says, "I'm gonna pull over to the side," and he pulled out from the line of traffic that was behind him, "and pull over here and I'll come back." Well, the young man fled. And, well, once he fled, I knew I needed to get out of the line of traffic and call for help. The storage place AAA was there and she called three times for help. I used my cellphone when I could get my hands on it and I called two. And I was told that they didn't have anybody, you know, available. They didn't know what time they could come to me. And I wasn't bleeding, thank God, anything, you know, was just shook. And what I wanted to do was to have documentation just in case I got sick. That was all I was looking for. I called my insurance company, which is USAA, and explained what had happened. And while I was there, he said, "Oh, I'm looking right at you where you are." He says, "There is no stop sign there." And I said, "No," and gave him the information. I waited, that was before three, and I waited till almost five o'clock. No one came. That disturbed me. I am a taxpayer, just like each of you in here. And if I wasn't a taxpayer, I have feelings. I'm a human being. And if it was one of you or your family members, you would probably be up here saying something too. And if you didn't see it here, you would see it among yourselves. So I think that maybe need to try to work on this. We're doing all the billing, we're inviting people in, and this is the Navy place, the largest installation in the United States. And you can't take care of what we have. So just maybe, maybe the pay, maybe you can do something more. I was listening to the gentleman as he spoke a few minutes ago. It's hazardous. And I know everybody's looking for money, but you know, if you can find some money in the budget to help the policemen, hey, maybe this would not have happened. And a neighbor said the same thing happened to her last year. So that's all. I just want to call your attention to it. Thank you so much for listening. Have a great evening.
Amelia Koppich.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, council members and city manager and city staff. Just wanted to thank you all for letting us come. I'm here, okay, let me back up. My name is Amelia Koppich and I live at thirty-eight twenty-four Wedgefield Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ingleside Civic League and want to first thank you all for all the help that you've given us, lending your ear and hearing us out for some of the challenges that we have. Tonight, we have brought forth not only just the challenges, but we brought forth some solutions that will help our community stay relevant and continue to grow. So I won't stay long because there will be other people that will follow me tonight that will give you in-depth information to let you know what we would like to do for our community. So once again, I'm thanking you in advance for all the help that you would give us and thanks again for listening.
Thank you. Deborah Pace.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Pace and I live at thirty-six oh four Kentucky Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. I'm here this evening to show support for my Ingleside Civic League and community. I am asking you to do whatever is necessary to help us and the community, the Elizabeth River Project, Wetlands Watch, and the remarkable students from the University School of Agriculture to make real their ideas and proposals that can help with the flooding and stormwater problems that plague us in Ingleside. I'm also here to implore you to rebuild or remodel our community rec center. I know that some of you have been to our civic league meetings and you know the condition Right now, it doesn't have the ability to serve our growing and diverse community. While we thank you for our gem, we need you very much to update our recreation center. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Southall.
Good evening. Before I speak, may I present you all with your packets?
To clerk it, thank you.
There might be one extra if not. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Alexander, council members, city manager, and city staff. My name is Nikki Southall and I reside at eight six six Wedgefield Court. I'm here this evening to share with you all of the hard work that my community has been engaged in. The Civic League sponsored a community forum in October twenty sixteen to bring new and old neighbors together in an effort to tap into the desires and needs that the community was facing. Neighborhood safety, recreation, infrastructure, and community commitment were the four key areas of concern. The need to have a fully functioning, improved, and expanded rec center was at the top of the list. The residents overwhelmingly agreed that the current center is antiquated, outdated, and not fully serving the community adequately. Currently, the center is one open room that can operate as two separate spaces without a wall of partition. It has four computers and desks that were obtained in February twenty fifteen. There is no designated playroom, computer lab, gamer craft room, and no private meeting room and lacks any modern technology to hold a professional meeting. The Civic League and community at large is formally requesting to have an upgraded and expanded center that has separate meeting rooms with updated technology and space to host youth and seniors in their respective activities throughout the year and summer. According to the City of Norfolk Recreation Master Plan dated June twenty twelve, the vision of RPOS is to refresh the facilities. Quote, "The bones of a great park system are already in place in Norfolk, but with much of the system, but much of the system needs to be refreshed and updated with new facilities and additional activities," end quote. We believe that the current location of the recreation center will adequately support the expanding of the center and hope that the council finds our needs reasonable and necessary. In our packet that we have for you all tonight, we included excerpts from the master plan and highlighted certain areas that support our efforts. When we send out the letter via email to council a couple of weeks ago, we were very happy to hear that Councilwoman Graves and Councilwoman McClellan confirmed that Ingleside had received earmarked money from this year's budget that would be used for community improvement. We thank you for hearing and acknowledging us, and we look forward to more money being earmarked in future budget cycles to complete this project. Thank you. The community has also been working to improve the Ingleside Scott Street corridor that is the front porch of our neighborhood. We have reached out to the property owners in an effort to request aesthetic upgrades to that section, that six alone Virginia Beach Boulevard. We are also working on obtaining a new gateway sign for our community. And last but certainly not least, we are very excited to work with Elizabeth River Project, Wetlands Watch, and University of Virginia School of Agriculture in a collaborative effort to work on plans to reduce flooding and mitigate stormwater issues in Ingleside. Our urge council to read over the handout that has been provided to you that details the outcome of the three meetings that took place and the ideas and hard work that this project has produced. The Ingleside community has a pressing issue and immediate issue pertaining to flooding on Fontaine Avenue and Towns End Place. Severe flooding results in an impassable street that cuts off over seventy residents from entering and exiting the neighborhood. We are looking forward to creating a green street sparked by the vision of the UVA students. This particular project will require the city to engage with infrastructure structure solutions and allow funding to complete this project. It is with this vision and innovative mind frame that we strive to make Ingleside a fully sustainable neighborhood from front to back. With all of the exciting projects that the city is undertaking, we truly believe that Ingleside is the model neighborhood in Ingleside, in Norfolk, that encompasses everything this coastal city has to offer. Ingleside is a thriving community with a robust Civic League, a true multicultural, diverse, socio-economic, and multi-generational community. We are a part of Broad Creek and Elizabeth River, and we also have a light rail stop. We are excited for the future and hope that city council will help us achieve our goals and continue to make Ingleside a neighborhood of choice. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to commend you on this. I always say that civic leagues are the most local form of government that we have, and you're operating very well.
Thank you.
And I hope other civic leagues can learn from you and maybe there's an opportunity for you to help others as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would totally agree. I think that you have a super opportunity to help with other civic leagues. This is very impressive.
Thank you.
And Nikki, if you would get with Mr. Rogers in the back, who you know very well. One of the things that this council is doing is trying to develop civic link neighborhood plans with the civic leagues. And we just voted a few weeks ago for Old Huntersville.
Right.
And their neighborhood plan, you're here. So this is great, and Mr. Rogers will work with you and help.
He has a copy.
With technical assistance. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank y'all for coming. Ingleside, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Reiger.
Good evening. My name is Joe Reiger. I live at five two seven Kenosha Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, two three five oh nine. I'm here tonight representing the Elizabeth River Project. And the Elizabeth River Project would like to thank the mayor, council members, city manager, and staff for the tremendous partnership we've had with Norfolk for the last twenty-three years. As many of you know, the Lafayette River just this past year was delisted for bacteria and that is not a small feat. Not many water bodies in Virginia get delisted. And now we're focusing our efforts on the eastern branch, which I believe our executive director, Marjorie Mayfield Jackson briefed you on. And our focus is on Broad Creek. Broad Creek has some of the worst water quality in Elizabeth River. And so as part of this effort, we started engaging Ingleside this past winter and we brought in Wetlands Watch and the University of Virginia to do a charrette with the community. And that work was welcomed from the strong community and, as you can see, well-organized community that you saw tonight. And our idea is focused on developing ideas and designs, real designs that we can implement to reduce flooding in Ingleside, which is quite, quite large, and also improving water quality going to Broad Creek. To help jumpstart these efforts, just last week, Elizabeth River Project applied for eight, over eight hundred thousand dollars of funding that which will be spent in the city of Norfolk, and five hundred thousand of that will go to Ingleside directly. We look forward to setting up meetings in the near future with key city leadership and also staff so that we can brief you on the outcome of the UVA work that we did with Wetlands Watch. And I'd like to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Tavol Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tavol Taylor and I live at twenty-eight forty-seven Cochester Crescent in Norfolk, the great city of Norfolk. I am the current PTA Vice President as well as an employee at the Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella. Tonight, I stand before you on behalf of my school as well as my principal. We received some devastating news that she will be part of the transition process for this upcoming school year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, to be moved and demoted unwillingly. This change could be very detrimental, not only to the school, to the staff, our community, but more importantly, to the students that we serve. As you know, Southside STEM Academy, we are housed in a very special part of Norfolk. We've served some students with some very unique personalities, very unique home lives. It requires more than the instructional piece. With her leadership, the example that she has set forth for the staff, the way that she supports her staff, it has guided us and she has pulled us together so that when the children come in, they receive more than just the instructional piece. They receive that warm welcome, that love that they need. Some of them really don't get a hug or that encouragement. This change could not only mean that some of the staff could be a little bit disturbed, but we're adults, we can kind of get over that. But the relationships that she's built with some of the parents, the community members that we have, some of the surrounding churches, the local organizations, which makes things a little bit easier for us as well as the students that we serve, that could all be severed. At this moment, I stand before you just trying to give you some interest or give you some concerns that we have so that you would be able to kind of look into this situation. If you can give any feedback, if you have just a slight bit of love for the children that we serve, if you could, just make a call, ask a couple of questions, see what you can do. We hope that you would be beneficial to this process to maybe we can keep our principal. It matters to the children that we serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Desiree Elliott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I am Desiree Elliott, PTA President for Southside STEM Academy, also an employee at Southside STEM Academy as well. I'm here today because we received the news about our principal being forcibly moved and demoted. We are understandably upset and so we decided to come out and force tonight. The SSAC family decided to come out and join us just to let you know how seriously we were feeling about this. Just a few bullets about some things that Dr. Ambrose have done since she had the opportunity to work with us. She came into the building already in priority. Test scores were horrible, down in the low percents. Since she's been there, we've had double-digit gains over three areas. She received the school that was already closing one older school. She had to come in and close that school out, move us into a temporary building that we walked into. And I can tell you, the first time it rained in that building, water was everywhere, sparks were flying, everything was going on. Still, she kept her head up and kept us straight through all of it. We stayed there three years. She got us out of that building. While she was in that building, she principled two sites. She was responsible for the portion of our school that was over at Berkeley Camp Estella ECC and also the portion two through five that was over at Camp Estella on Princess Anne Road. She then, under her leadership, brought us back into this new building, really seamlessly. It was, I moved out of the old building, I can tell you. Moving back was seamless. It was very easy and that was majorly in part of her leadership. After she closed us out, got us back over there, we then come into the school building and she never stopped running for our kids and she never does. She gives a hundred and ten percent at all times. So it is shocking to hear, not only are they talking about moving her, but moving her possibly back into a classroom as a teacher. That is a major demotion for such hard work. And I think when you have people that can pour their heart into a Title I area, that we need to uplift that and not reward that with demotions back into the classroom. She not only pours out Monday through Friday, she's there on the weekend, I've been there with her, we're in there whatever our kids need, whatever they need. When they walk into that building, we are just taught to give them whatever they need, whether it's a hug, whether it's a coat, whether it's a washing of a sweater. That's what she teaches us to do. That's what I've learned working under her, to give a hundred and ten percent. And so today, we are just asking that if there's anything you can do to kind of have this done in a way that lifts up the work that she's done instead of tearing down the work that she's done, we would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Sheila Janus.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. My name's Sheila Janus. I reside at six thirty-five Grayden Avenue. I'm an employee at Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella, and I'm here to advocate for my students. Just a little bit about the consistency that my students have in their lives. Just this year, my students have struggled with family situations that involve substance abuse, medical challenges, family instability, incarcerations. Had a student with a fire trauma, pretty big deal, burnt and a large portion on her body, violence, poverty, and last year shootings on the playground, so not all of them are allowed to go outside after school. Since they started kindergarten at Camp Estella, they had one principal in kindergarten, two more principals after that, and then Dr. Ambrose came. Dr. Ambrose has been consistent the past four years in my students' lives who haven't had all that consistency. They've had four principals since fifth grade, they've had five APs, and they've moved, let's see, our old school, the ECC, the school on Princess Anne, and now the school we're at now. So four times they've had different schools. I would like it if council would take a look at what's going on and see if we can't continue to provide this, our principal, the consistency for the neighborhood, for the students. As they, as they move about their lives, consistency isn't always there. Dr. Ambrose has been consistent. She has not only split her time with two schools for three years, but she's also moved over with us at the new school, and we would like for her to continue to stay at Southside STEM Academy. Thank you. Can I just ask if you are from Southside STEM Academy, if you would stand?
Thank you. James Charman.
Good afternoon, council. Could I pass you some information? Thank you. Again, good afternoon, council. I am James Charman Jr., son of Willie James Charman, and my son James Charman III is right there. After much anticipation, fanfare endorsements from former councilmen Don Hester, present councilmen's, I highly sought out the Southside STEM Academy. I got through there initially through the lottery process. And for me and the kids being the future, anything with STEM, science, technology, engineering, math is a good thing. So I got to the school, I went the first night of orientation, and there were seventy-four people from the lottery. I can't verbatim repeat in open form what went on, but the basic question was that I can repeat is, are those people from that project coming to this school? Is it a neighborhood school? At that point, many of those people tore up their lottery slips and walked out, said, "I'm not going." The difference in Charman and those people is instead of pointing the blame and the finger and accusing people, I decided to roll my sleeves up, donate my money and my time, which was inspired by Dr. Rhonda Ambrose. Anybody that can inspire me to get out of the bed nine o'clock on Saturday and teach and tutor kids in Seapurge until twelve o'clock is an inspiration. Okay? So I have seen her on Saturday at the school, I've seen her there eleven o'clock Monday through Friday. I've seen the teachers that she has inspired to work Monday through Friday till five, when school is out at two forty-five, and then come back on Saturday from nine to twelve with me. So I thank the headship and her inspiration that she is should not go unrewarded. I also observed that she got awards for bringing the kids' scores out of the basement and into double digits. I am forced to remember another city employee, Stan Hyatt, serving the city in various capacities, promoted for his good work, then fired and terminated and called incompetent and recently rehired. I know council does not directly have this matter. We were at the school board last week. But what I would appeal to you to do, I know, I look at council, is to connect the people in the city. Please go to the Southside STEM Academy and look at this lady's good work and the hard work and efforts that she makes in that community. That lady loves those kids. As the Bible says, she has a clean heart. If you can't get there, at least call and offer her some encouragement. Somebody sitting here has to know something they can do to help this situation and it is dire. Our kids are the future. Men of this room have already been here longer than we gonna be here. The kids are the future. If we don't take our time and help them, these kids with saggy pants and headphones, they gonna be council members. these kids with saggy pants and headphones, they gonna be council members. They gonna be delegates. One of them might even be president of the United States.
Thank you very much. Todd Davis?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Dr. Ambrose for the Southside STEM School. You know Norfolk really has my head spinning with the change of superintendents and principals down through the years. I've been in Norfolk since I retired from the Navy, working in the schools for about 16 years, mentoring. I was with the PTA and a parent volunteer at Camp Estella since 2008. Not just that school, but so many other schools that the principals are just being put in and taken out and very little stability in the schools that need stability the most. I mean, you're learning people. You understand these things better than some of the rest of us, and yet it still goes on. You may not be directly responsible, but if you have any hand in stopping this madness, you really should. Dr. Ambrose was put into a situation that nobody else wanted to take that job. Let's just be honest. She was given it. And rather than remove her, what you really should be doing is lending her greater support because you're not going to find another person that's going to come in and have the love and dedication for the children, the community and the parents. You may put another person in there, but you're just going to be changing heads. You're not changing the community. Keep her there. Give her the resources that she needs, that she's been begging for in some cases. And if you're not aware of it, you need to become smarter about what's going on and what's lacking in that school as far as teachers and other support system. Keep her there. Let her continue to do the job and give her the confidence that you have confidence in her. So you just have to be looking over her shoulder all the time, wondering what's going to happen next. She's the right person to stay there. When no one else would do it, she stepped up. And I think you all are well aware of that. So now do right by her. She did it for you. Now it's your turn to step up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things that I want to just reiterate what Mr. Charman said, the school board and the superintendent, they have complete authority over the employment of Norfolk Public Schools, staff, faculty, teachers, personnel. Indeed, we handle the funding. We provide funding for Norfolk Public Schools. But thank you for coming. We certainly learned a lot tonight. But I want you to continue to make your case with the Norfolk Public School Board as well as the superintendent. So, but really, thank you for coming. Daniel Legan?
May I, before Mr.?
Please, Miss Ginn, wait a minute.
I just, I would just like to say, I want to say I thank you all for coming out. And you know, back in the day, so to speak, when people wanted things done, they did this old-fashioned thing called writing letters. And they would galvanize as individuals and they would write letters to their council members. They would write letters to their delegates or whomever it was that they wanted to hear them. Well, even though we don't have to do that old-fashioned thing called writing letters, you can all encourage your friends and family and other parents and teachers to write letters to the school board and to the superintendent. Use your social media platforms that I'm sure all of you have some kind of social media platform to let other people know what's going on. There may be people who are not connected to the school, but they have children in the school and they don't know what's going on. And that's really neither here nor there. But if you post it out on Facebook or you put it out on Twitter or Snapchat or InstaNet or whatever it is that's out there, people will find out what is going on. And you will make the school board and the superintendent hear you if it's something, if this is something that you want. Because we can no more tell the school board who to hire in the schools than they can tell us who to hire in the city. But you all have platforms and you all have mediums that you can use to get your message to the school board and to the superintendent. And if none of that works, they're all going to be up for reelection next year.
All right. Thank y'all for coming. Danny Legan?
Is he the last one again?
Yes.
Can I leave now?
Yes. Don't do it.
My name is Danny Legan. I reside at thirty eight forty four Dare Circle. You are now being passed around a letter written by Mr. Smigel in 2012. So I will admit it is somewhat dated. It's when he was young and fiery and came on board. And he expressed his viewpoints and frustrations. But I'm not here so much to discuss that as to support Mr. Smigel. As you've seen, I've changed the leaf. Last week, I congratulated Mr. Reddick for admitting that he was a racist and that he had only the race card to play against us. Tonight, I'm here to support Mr. Smigel. You may want to flip to the second page. I'm not going to read the entire thing to you. But at the end of his presentation, he wrote, "I also think the time has come for the Norfolk City Council, those members of the Virginia Legislature who represent the city of Norfolk and the citizens of Norfolk, to begin a dialogue regarding a change in the Norfolk City Charter or the creation of a state law similar to one passed in our neighboring state of North Carolina to more specifically define ethical behaviors for locally elected and appointed officials." I 100% support that. The problem is that you've just recently established new rules under Mayor Alexander. You've simply switched rules from the past over under his leadership. We have extreme rights which you can't legally enforce in order to control order and discipline within the council. But the problem that we have is that there are no rules for council people. If council people want to engage in profanity towards citizens, they can do so without any consequences, and that has occurred. If council members want to threaten citizens, they can do that without any consequences. If council members want to bully not only citizens but other council members, they can do that without any consequences. So it strikes me as rather peculiar that you have no limitations in your conduct and the way that you can conduct yourself and no consequences. But yet you are attempting to strip the citizens of the city of their First Amendment rights by putting such stringent limitations on their ability to express themselves within this council. So I would 100% again support Mr. Smigel's position of establishing a code of conduct, which not only that he showed in this letter, but he did bring up at the last retreat as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan, he's out.